All right, we're going, we're going. Um, it is, um, April seventh, twenty twenty-five workshop. I am Mayor Pro Tem Monica Daniels, and I'll be heading this up until the mayor arrives. Clerk?
Got you. Mayor Connelly will be joining us shortly.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis. All right, Mayor Pro Tem, we have a call.
Thank you, manager.
So, um, the city attorney would like to make an amendment to the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Manager of Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I'd ask the council add a close session motion to be read at the end of the meeting, right before the adjournment on the, uh, agenda.
The workshop, second. The workshop?
Yes, ma'am.
The workshop.
During the workshop.
Yeah, yeah. End of the workshop.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Scully, second by Councilwoman Blackburn. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The first item on the agenda tonight is a presentation of a proposed ECU Health Primary Care Learning Center in North Greenville. I can say that, uh, the, uh, there have been a number of city councils that have had asked the question over the years, over many years. Thunder right there.
No way, Michael, nobody, nobody.
Oh, that is one one.
It really is thunder.
Everything's buzzing.
So, a number of city councils over the years have asked on the question of how we can provide healthcare services and pharmaceutical services to a very needy area north of the river. And I also say that a, a significant number of city leaderships have also done the same. But I do believe that we are as close as we've ever been to being able to solidify, uh, services on the north side that will improve the lives of the citizens in that area as well as the county. And about seven months ago, I've started a, uh, a relationship with ECU Health and a partnership to look, first of all, how we could provide pharmaceutical services on, on the north side of Greenville. But it evolved into a much larger conversation about access to healthcare. And I'm proud to say that we are, uh, to a point where we can provide to you a vision of what those healthcare services could look like in a partnership between the city, ECU Health, and the ECU School of Medicine. And I'm also proud to have tonight with us our ECU Health Physicians Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Jason Foltz, and the ECU Vice President of Community Health, Dr. Keshida Jackson, that are going to provide an overview of, unto you what a primary care learning center would look like on that north side and what the next steps could be in partnership with the city. So, Dr. Foltz, Keshida.
Good to see you. Very good. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
All right, thank you, Michael, and city council members. Uh, our slides are here.
Yep. Michael, buzz.
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, that's correct. Uh, there you go.
All right. All right. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I told someone a few minutes ago, if I got in front of the podium, I might think I'm at church and start reading church announcements, so please forgive me for that. Um, so thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to talk about the primary, um, Care Learning Center in North Greenville. This has been a vision of love and hard work for the last couple of months, um, I would even dare to say over the last couple of years. With the partnership of so many in this room, Michael, um, Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, and so many others, I even want to mention, um, Councilwoman, um, Foreman, because of our work together in the past. Um, as Doc, as Michael mentioned, my name is, um, Keshida Jackson. I serve in the role of Vice President of Community Health at ECU Health.
Yep, and Jason Foltz, I'm the family doc, but I actually am the CMO of the practice plant.
I'm Dee Whitneweck, owner of Groundbreaking Developers with Unshakable Builders.
Um, and today Charlie Waters, who is a pharmacist who's worked on this, he was not able to make it today, um, but he sends his well wishes and, um, a lot of good information. So, the problem that we're trying to solve is that we understand that there are a couple of, um, concerns and issues that we have here in the city of Greenville, one of those being a lack of primary care. Um, we have our ED visits where our patients come who have low acute issues, who come to our ED, which makes our volumes go up, and it makes our wait times also go up, as some of you may be well aware of. Um, the need for having primary care learning sites for our future providers, um, including our medical school, um, our PA in nursing. We understand that if we recruit, they will retain and they will stay in this community, which will be a great benefit, um, going forward in the future. And transportation, throughout all of this, we know that we have to be able to get our patients from point A to point B. So this was another opportunity for us to be able to work with the city of Greenville to be able to do that. And as Michael mentioned, um, pharmacy, north, in North Greenville, there is not a pharmacy, but our goal is to look forward to the future and see how do we make those things become a reality. Oh, one more, one more little thing. Um, when we looked at this, we looked at this from a social vulnerability index. So that means the higher the vulnerability of your population, there, um, there would be needs to have, um, issues and, sorry, there would be a need to have primary care in these locations because we see that patients who are using our ED are coming from this community or those communities such as North Greenville. Um, and this is just a mission. This is our mission. This is your mission. That's the mission of, um, all of us, is to provide great care for those who need it at a timely manner. I won't read your missions to you. I won't read our mission, but the general context of it is that if we're working together, we're meeting the overall goal of those who need healthcare, um, at the most vulnerable So just to go into a little bit deeper context, um, this is North Greenville. This, when we mapped this out, we saw that when we look at our ED and those that are coming into our EDs, they're coming from certain pockets, and we zeroed this down to North Greenville. Those that are using our EDs are coming from things that we call less acute or not, lower acuity, such as, um, chest pain, because it could be not chest pain, it could actually be gas, um, headache, fever, toothache, those things that if we had a primary care learning center, those things could be addressed, um, having timely appointments versus going to our EDs. So placing this here in the community, um, it would address those who did not have access, not only to a provider, but also helping with resources such as insurance. And the, the data directs us that, um, a large amount of our patients who are using our ED, um, are self-pay patients. And our goal is to try to put as many individuals with the tools that they need to be successful. Those tools are having, um, insurance.
All right, so to solve all of those problems, our solution to that was really creating a new primary care site of care in North Greenville, and with a twist. Um, it's very important that we have a learning site for all of the types of students that are, are future health professionals. You all are aware the Verdi School of Medicine was recently started construction to grow its class size from eighty to a hundred and twenty medical students. We have a growing need for nurse practitioner and PA students, and we have a very shrinking, um, base of preceptors here in eastern North Carolina to be able to have those students, uh, be in a learning environment. So the model that we're looking is a fully functional primary care clinic, like you have today with your own primary care physician, with appointments, insurance, the ability to draw labs, ability to have x-ray. We're looking at wraparound services that include behavioral health, social work, financial counselors, health coaches, the options to include some nutritional services in that model, but it's going to be student-led. And so the difference is, you might have some experience of going to see one of my physicians where I practice at ECU Family Medicine, you're coming to see me, and I might have a student with me. In this center, we're looking to say, the students are assigned to that center, the patients will be appointed to those students, they will be the student doctor of the patient that visit, and they will be supervised directly by two, uh, fully functioning family physicians that will be overseeing all the students in that learning center.
Do you want us to hold our questions until the end? Okay. Let's see those questions.
All right. Hello, everyone.
How you doing?
I'm good. My name is, uh, Dee Whitneweck. I'm the owner of, um, this site here, um, Groundbreaking Developers. Um, basically what we're showing here is this area here is the new site that we bought. It's twenty-two acres out here, so we got nine acres of commercial in the front, and we also have, um, thirteen acres of residential from the park all the way up to Memorial. But we're looking to develop, um, two hundred and four, um, apartment complex. So what that would do is also add density board. Right now, you know, we got the rising cost and interest rates up right now, so trying to make the numbers work, that's one of the things I'm working on right now, but that area is where we're looking to put the residential. That would add density to be able to accommodate the commercial up in the front area. So what you see here is a building that was designed by Dr. Foltz, gave me a floor, floor plan, and I took this building and drew a, what the center could possibly look like to accommodate what they were looking for. It's a seventy-five hundred square foot building with, um, thirteen of them on. So this is possibly what the building could look like out on the site, uh, when it's finished. But it can be modified and changed as we continue to push the process forward.
And your floor plan's just a typical floor plan, a center area for nursing, exam rooms around, a large conference area for learning, and hopefully a place to provide group visits and education to the patients that we serve in that area, and enough office space for some of those ancillaries that we hope to have, whether it's social work, behavioral health, uh, health coaches, et cetera. Uh, the other aspect of the problem to be solved, and I think Michael brought it up in his comments, is just the need for retail pharmacy in that area. So, um, we've been working with our Director of Pharmacy at ECU Health, Charlie Waters, and he provided some of these national stats, that nationally, our independent retail pharmacies are closing at about one a day. And this year, both Walgreens and CVS have, uh, put on their list to close fifteen hundred stores, uh, nationwide, and a hundred of them in North Carolina. So that's going to make it harder for our patients to achieve the medications that they need, and the quote at the top is, the medicines don't work if people don't take them, but if they don't have access to them, they can't take them either. So, uh, we are in discussion with, what is the feasibility of a partnership of including a retail pharmacy in this space, so that while the patient served there can have easy access, similar to the model, if any of you, uh, get care at our Moe Medical Center or our Family Medicine Center, we have embedded pharmacies in there, um, similar to that, but also a place for, even if you're not a patient of the, the clinic, that you can come and get your pharmacy care there. So, um, in addition to the partnership that we're looking to create here with the city of Greenville, we have, um, started, uh, numerous discussions and commitments and application process with other potential partners. So first, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, we have applied for a, a grant focusing on community outreach, and we should know by the end of this month, or early May, if that was approved. Um, a big part of this, uh, request today is for support for our Duke Endowment. So we are in the process of applying for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant with the Duke Endowment over three years, and a big part of the success rate for that is if we're able to show the Duke Endowment, we have other partners who are willing to put a financial investment into the program. Uh, the School of Medicine has committed, uh, state dollars to this institution. ECU Health has committed, uh, to help supporting it fiscally, and, uh, we have yourself and Unshakable Builders, the partner.
Um, so the timeline to get us from point A to point B, and I mentioned that we had conversations, um, with, um, trying to get through my notes. We had conversations internally and externally to see if this would be something that would be feasible, and, um, overall, we've heard nothing but positive, um, positive feedback. So one of our first conversations that we had was in twenty twenty-four, where we met with the community, because we want to make sure this isn't something that we think that would be a benefit, we want to hear from the community directly. And what we've heard from the community is that this would be a value add. Um, so from there, we had additional community listening sessions, and what we heard from those sessions is that they didn't want something that was not going to be sustainable. And they didn't want free care, they wanted care that would be the same care that they would receive anywhere else. Um, we've met internally, externally, and we're here today to talk with you all about, um, the, about the learning center. Um, June the fifteenth is when we should hear the great news of, hopefully, I'm speaking this into existence, um, that we will receive the reward, um, and if that should be so, then the funds will be released in, um, December.
Let me clarify that. We apply on June fifteenth, and we'll find out in December.
Thank you. You always have an accountability part. Um, and our goal is that we would hope that this would go live and this would construct in February, um, or March of twenty twenty-six.
So, I will, I will take the next step here. Uh, since I've become a city manager, I have made a concerted effort to, uh, to enhance the services on the north side. That includes not only jobs, but housing, as well as the services such as healthcare and pharmacy. And it's a, it's a three-pronged approach. It's just not, uh, it's just not healthcare and pharmacy, it's not just, uh, uh, housing, but it's also jobs as well. So you gotta be working on all three at the same time, and, and I've talked to each one of you about all the different, uh, projects that we've got going on in that area. And so with this collaboration, I do believe that we're, uh, one step away of being able to provide direct primary care access to residents on the north side, as well as pharmaceutical care. But it's going to have to come in a collaborative format, not just with, uh, ECU Health, working through the ECU School of Medicine, but also with the city. So here tonight, I'm gonna put it right out there, and I ask council that, uh, that we support this Duke Endowment application, not only with a, a letter of support, but also a fiscal commitment over a ten-year period of being anywhere between a million and a million a half that would be negotiated based off of the services that would be provided at the, at the time that we get ready to look at the contracted services. This is a great opportunity for us to work together with ECU Health, but most importantly, it's about providing a need to the community. I go back and, uh, look, I just approved to you, I do listen during the council meetings. One of the first things, one of the, one of the things that I heard when we were talking about gas stations, is so many people come up and say, we need a doctor's office, we need a, a pharmacy over there. And honestly, I made it a goal of ours to make sure that we could work to bring that, uh, to fruition, and this is just one step away of making that happen. So I look forward to, uh, a, a, a relationship not only with ECU Health, but also with Unshakable Builders, who also is looking to enhance density over there in a multifamily project. I know he said it's, he's trying to work the numbers out, but ultimately, we would like to see that becoming successful as well. So?
Do you need a vote or a thumbs up?
Can I ask you a couple of questions first?
What, what, what we need?
Okay.
I'm just asking for a thumbs up.
Okay. You got it.
Yeah, really, I mean, I cannot, I don't have enough thumbs to be thumbs up on this. This is absolutely incredible, and you're absolutely right, that it has been discussed for a long time, and everybody said, oh, no, we don't know what to do, uh, what can we do? And by God, you guys have brought something of vision. And like I say, I don't have enough thumbs to do the thumbs up on this, but I do have a couple of questions, not to get too much in the weeds, because I'm sure a lot of this is being worked out. This is truly a, a different model, a model that, that our community is creating to serve the needs of our community, and that's the way to do things. Um, with it being student-led, will, will these, will there, will these be like the M, what, M threes and fours mostly, or?
That's right. So in medical school, whenever you start providing, your clinical years, that's in the third and fourth year of medical school. So all of our third years have to go through a family medicine clerkship, so as they rotate through that eight-week clerkship, we'll be getting students every eight weeks that will be rotating through that. And then for our fourth years, those are the folks that we really want to have a passion for primary care, to do electives. And they're the more advanced students that are more independent, and so they have to do certain electives if they want to do residency in family medicine, and that's where they, they would do that.
And will there be a doctor on site at all times?
Oh, there has to be.
Okay, that's what I'm hearing.
And a physician must, uh, lay eyes and be part a hundred percent of the patient visit. It's just how you structure it that's a little different.
I always tell the story, and, um, I will continue to tell it with the indulgence of everyone around me. Um, someone that I worked with, who, um, may she rest in peace, died from entirely preventable causes, because she was unable to get to a medical clinic, she could not have the regular care that she needed, and she could not get the pharmaceuticals that she needed. And when I hear this, I think of her, and I think of all the people who, not only will they have access to care, but their lives will be saved. And so this, this project, I know has special meaning for Mayor Pro Tem Daniels and Councilmember Foreman, and of course, uh, Councilmember Willis representing the entire city and all of us. But for me, it has sort of a, also has a special emotional meaning, because I think of her, and I think that, you know, she didn't, she didn't die in vain because it created the passion and the urgency for doing this.
Mayor, I'd like to add one other thing. This was.
It needs something beneath you. I represent the whole city as well.
You do, I'm sorry about that.
I'm just dissing five.
Look, look, one of the things that, uh, one of the, the best parts of this, we didn't even touch on, I'm gonna take a second to touch on that. You know that we are rolling out an on-demand service on the north side. So ECU and the city are working in partnership to find a relationship where we could provide the direct on-demand service to anybody on that north side, to this clinic or to the pharmacy, take them from their home, to the clinic and to the pharmacy, and back to their home, on an on-demand service. And then we're also exploring how we can get that back into the city, because remember, we're, we're starting with one zone, but our goal is to, to rotate that, uh, that on-demand all the way through the, uh, the, the city. So once we get the north side done, theoretically, what we're going to do is be able to expand that so that we can have on-demand service, not just to the, the primary care physician's office and pharmacy on the north side, but also to ECU Health in the middle of the city. And we, we've met several times with, between their transportation staff and our transportation staff, Director Mulligan, to start to trip, to start to form that, that partnership to make that happen as well. So not only are we providing care, but we're providing the access through transportation to the care as well.
This Newkirk, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Newkirk, Lieutenant Robinson, thank you for your involvement. Can you, again, tell me how many housing units you anticipate on the edge of this development?
Two hundred and four.
Thank you. And this is by, by the McDonald's on the road, right, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
The proposed location is right there off of Easy Street, which is right across the street from the, from the food line.
That means it's gonna be pretty easy.
That's, we, we tried to find the most central location, um, that we could to locate this.
Food lines over there in Washington.
Um, I had a question in regards to the, um, the schedule. So from what I've heard, it sounds like it will be a typical maybe eight to five, um, operation.
That's, that's what we're looking to start at. Um, one of the key things that we're going to try to do is have more same-day access and what we call advanced access in a model of care. So we're not necessarily booking people three and six months out, but we try to develop a system so that when you are seen for your chronic care, we're calling you maybe same week, try to avoid the no-shows, and, and maybe also schedule the continuity as our medical students do different rotations.
Awesome. What came to mind, I attend, um, ECU Physicians Off Fire Tower Road, and I don't know if it was over the summer that they did this, but they, uh, started a, um, the Saturday Hours Clinic, and it was something that was like, oh, wow, okay. So it was, I think it was only until maybe two o'clock, but you had an option on a Saturday to be able to go in and see someone or be triaged for some reason. So I was just thinking about down the line as we build it out, maybe that be an option that the residents could take advantage of, um, as we.
Ironically, as we've studied the ED utilization data, we find that the majority of ED visits are actually happening during business hours on weekdays. We would think it's the evening hours as people are getting off of work, but what we're really finding is people who have established care are not being able to get in to their medical home and just going straight to the emergency room during business hours.
Matching transportation with this, and you, this is something that I think most of us in this room are aware of, but if you don't have transportation, you don't have medical care. It, it, it's, it's just that simple and tragic. You can't get there, you can't get to your appointments, you don't have that medical care, and then if, if you don't get that prescription, you don't get that life-saving medication you need.
Goals to take out every single obstacle we can to provide connection between the patient and the medical services.
Because, I mean, excuse me, if you think about that, some people will use an ambulance because they don't have that transportation, um, and so this would alleviate that in the future.
And that, that on-demand service will be same-day pickup, and, and so it doesn't, it doesn't mean has to be, uh, scheduled twenty-four hours or more in advance, you could just schedule, and we will, it will pick you up and we'll take you, and we'll take you back.
That can easily be coordinated with doctor's appointments. That's one of the things that, um, we have all talked about, is how do we, the patient has an appointment at five, four thirty. Um, sometimes it is difficult because you're relying on someone to get off of work, um, but with this on-demand service, and we're able to have, you know your appointment out, because we tend to give you an appointment three months out, or six months if it's dependent, um, but you're able to call and be able to get there to, to be seen and hopefully not having to go to the emergency room because you weren't able to be seen because of transportation.
We also don't want to only create the traditional office visit, we want to train our medical students in doing this, uh, medicine, and obviously now we're getting the broadband and technology, but the more we can have virtual business with our patients that are in that situation, the better. So we'll be operating that type of models.
I just want to say thank you, especially to Mr. Manager. Um, I've watched you work incredibly hard with this, um, Dr. Jackson, um, all, everyone involved, I think. Um, the first night that I was sworn in with the city council, that was like, we need a pharmacy north of the river, we need a pharmacy north of the river. And, um, even speaking with Senate, now Senator Smith, that was one of her goals that we've always been trying, um, like you said, prior councils, um, and to see this, we tried things like having pharmacy drugs delivered. North of the river, when you have elderly, they want brick and mortar, they want to see it, they want to see the pharmacist, they want to know that it's real. Um, and I just, this is just, I can't say not good things about it, and I'm like marrying, I don't, I don't have enough thumbs for this. And thank you all again for all your hard work and the studies and the drive-arounds and everything that's been going on to bring us to this place.
Well, I'd not to embarrass Dr. Foltz, but to embarrass Dr. Foltz. Um, it, this has been his vision, and I'm fortunate enough, um, so I do want this on record. I'm fortunate enough that I've been able to, to be beside him, and while he's creating this great vision, or not only, um, helping us think differently. for not only helping us think differently from ECU Health, but the Brody School of Medicine and also this partnership with the city. So without his leadership and his thought going forward, because sometimes there are some doors that you have to truly push really hard. So this has been a labor of love for him. Not to embarrass him, but just.
And you're a great door pusher.
I know, I spoke to her one time and she was like, "I know the exact person who has this vision already." So that, yeah, it's awesome.
So thank you all. Are there any more questions?
I was just going to say too, you know, I'm, she's being modest, modest, but I'll say this is, you took the words out of my mouth. You know, this is my 10th year, as in I like to do official. And since I've been on the city council, now as the mayor, we've had these discussions about healthcare north of the river. And I know it's been the vision of several council members, but I want to say thank you to Monica Daniels. Thank you to our city manager. Thank you to ECU Health. Thank you guys for having the vision and I think showing the importance of collaboration. Thank you to Unshakeable Builders. I mean, I think that this is a good, this is a great way to not only help out healthcare, but also develop north of the river in a positive manner. I mean, I think many people understand that you can't have a standalone building right there, you know, for a commercial node over there. You've got to have people in close proximity. And that's one of the things I've learned as being elected official. Shante stood in front of us many times and talked about, you know, having these commercial nodes and having, what do we call them? Something centers, like commercial centers or something. Activity centers. I listened a little bit, Shante. But it's important to have that. And I think that you have to look at development from a macro approach instead of such a micro approach. And I think that it's awesome that you guys had the vision to be able to push this and finally get healthcare over there. And I think it's awesome to show the collaboration from the community. These are things that we should be working on as a community. And, you know, it's great to be able to put those pieces together. Maybe it took 10, 15, 20 years to get, you know, partners that had the same vision together. But finally, we're here, right? We've had these discussions. And now it's going to be fruitful for the people of Greenville.